Call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, November 20th. Time is 7:00. I'd ask you to please call the roll.
President Salas.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Interim Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Malina.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Haley, not with us this evening, Trustee Sussman.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. If you'd please join us for the pledge.
My presentation is to the people of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice
Thank you very much. Before we get to our regular meeting this evening, we do have two public hearings that are required by ordinance. The first is the proposed 2014 tax levy for the Village of Riverside and the Riverside Public Library. Mr. Salas.
Good evening to all of those in attendance today. First item I want to state is that the village, in accordance with state statute, did publish a notice of today's public hearing. It was published in the Riverside Landmark on November 12, 2014. At the prior meeting, I don't know if you recall, but I presented two estimates of the 2014 tax levy. One estimate included a levy for the anticipated 2014 bond issuance, and the other one didn't. Since then, we all know that the voters did approve the issuance of the 2014 general obligation bonds by a three-to-one margin, and so the village anticipates issuing $2,330,000 in general obligation bonds with debt service beginning in 2015. Now, the tax levy has been revised upward by about $77,000 because the previous estimate had an estimated amount for the debt service on this new issuance. The actual debt service for 2015 on this new issuance is approximately $257,000. Now, that being said, even though we did increase the levy, the actual debt service for the new issuance is still in line with the 2004 bonds that will be paid off next month. And that's in accordance with what the village has been stating all along, that this new general obligation bond issuance will be tax neutral. It will not, in of itself, cause an increase in anyone's property tax bill. To recap, the revised net tax levy for the village currently stands at $5,182,800. And like I said, that includes a $77,000 increase. This levy represents an increase of approximately 3.53% over the 2013 levy. Keep in mind, though, that the Cook County Tax Extension Office will cap that or decrease that to approximate 1.5% increase plus any new EAV. Now, for the library, the library's tax levy did not change. The library's tax levy is currently at $1,42,557. Their levy was approved by their board at their November 11, 2014 meeting. Now, the trustees should have received the actual copy of the 2014 tax levy ordinance. That ordinance actually allocates the levy amongst the various cost centers and amongst the various funds. That ordinance will be presented to the board at the December 4, 2014 meeting for adoption. And if adopted, that'll give staff enough time to actually file it with Cook County by the December 30, 2014 deadline. That's all I have for the tax levy.
Are there any questions or comments concerning the Village of Riverside and the library levies? Hearing that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
By Ms. Collins.
Second.
Second, Ms. Hamilton, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing is adjourned. Moving on, the next public hearing is for the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2015. Mr. Salas.
Okay, so once again, we did publish a notice about the public hearing tonight in the Riverside Landmark, once again, on November 12, 2014. The budgeting process for the staff began in May of 2014. At the July 17, 2014 board meeting, the board reviewed the 10-year capital improvement plan and provided staff with feedback. At the subsequent board meeting, which was August 7, 2014, the board reviewed the five-year financial forecast plan and, once again, provided additional feedback to staff. On September 18, 2014, staff presented the proposed 2015 operating budget, which reflected a deficit of $220,182 in the general fund. So after numerous discussions between the board, staff, adjustments to preliminary estimates, additional reductions identified by staff, the general fund deficit has been reduced to its current state of $20,032. So that is, in the general fund, we currently have a proposed budget of $8,924,884 in revenues and $8,944,916 in budgeted expenditures. The board also spent considerable time reviewing the village's capital improvement plan. Some of the more notable capital items addressed by the board included elimination of the previously budgeted soil removal costs. That started at $110,000, and it was revised to $430,000, but it was eliminated altogether. There was also inclusion at the board's direction of $30,000 for demolition costs of the rubble garage, inclusion of $30,000 for a traffic study, inclusion of $22,000 for a business sign replacement program, and $10,000 for spot painting maintenance of the historic water tower. As previously mentioned, the village will be issuing those general obligation bonds. Initially, we thought that we were going to issue those in 2014, but it looks like they're going to actually close in January 2015. So there were revisions to the Capital Projects Fund and also the Debt Service Fund to reflect the closing in 2015. So those budgets increased. So recap, the total budgeted revenues for all of the village's funds currently stands at $21,140,108 and total budgeted expenditures of $25,82,295. As for the library, the library's budgeted revenues total $1,112,229, and total budgeted expenditures are $1,112,172. The library's appropriation budget was adopted by their Board of Trustees at their November 11, 2014 meeting. So once again, the trustees have received a copy of the actual budget ordinance, and that will be presented at the next board meeting for adoption. Any questions?
Any questions concerning the budget for the fiscal year 2015? Hearing that, I'd ask for a motion, a second, to adjourn the hearing. Motion by Mr. Foley.
Second.
Second, Ms. Hamilton, all in favor. Opposed. Public hearing is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Salas. We move on now to our regular meeting. Welcome to everyone who is here and everyone who is watching at home. If you're here with us tonight and you would like to make a comment during the meeting, you're welcome to do so at any time. You can either speak during a specific agenda item, or if you would like to speak more generally during public comment, you're welcome also to do that. I just ask that you be recognized by the president and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. So I have asked trustees for their indulgence, given the number of folks we have here who would like to speak tonight. We are going to do public comment first, prior to the presentation by Police Chief Weitzel. So I would open the floor now for public comment, and I believe, Mr. Sissilak, you had something you would like to tell us about.
Thank you for inviting me, once again, for the 1,000 Tree Planting Project. I also would like to thank Bob Up Hughes for the wonderful article. Hopefully, you might have read in the landmark yesterday. This is our eighth annual 1,000 Tree Planting Project, started in November of 2007, and at some point this Saturday, one of the volunteer planters will actually plant the 10,000th seed. We kind of jumped ahead of our 1,000 per year last year with the excellent article that was in the Chicago Tribune. We actually, I kind of planned ahead in case we would have a large turnout, which we did, over 207 people from Wisconsin, northern Indiana, Illinois, even a fellow from Germany was here teaching, but he came over as well. We actually planted 3,000 seeds last year. It was only 23 degrees, but it was clear. And this year will be 10:00 this Saturday morning, once again hosted by the United Methodist Church on 82 Woodside Road. Maybe that's the reason I chose our church, Woodside Road, right? We also will plant probably about 20 different varieties, and I'll pass this around. Maybe you can identify some of those from previous years when I handed those out. There's about 10 or 12 different variety of tree seeds in that collection. These are all native trees to Riverside and northern Illinois, primarily oaks, about 12 different kinds of oaks, shag bark hickory, black walnut, Ohio buckeye, I've mentioned a few. The trees that we planted during the first year, 2007, I've taken some pictures of, there are actually hundreds and hundreds of beautiful trees growing, but the trees from 2007 are now about five feet tall, doing great. However, when I was out just last weekend, the increase in the beaver, cutting down small trees and taking them to their winter residence is increasing, but so far, they've kind of stayed to the box elder trees, a little softer to chew through, so hopefully, they won't feast on the beautiful hardwoods that we're planting. This work is actually quite easy for those folks that are at home especially. There's no digging of any large holes, and the tools that I invented some 40 years ago are solid stainless steel, which also should be able to penetrate through the frost that we presently have. Just make a small hole, whatever the diameter of the seed is, you go approximately three times, so if it's an acorn, maybe only three or four inches, cylindrical hole, put the seed down on the bottom, fill it with dirt, and go on to the next one. Very easy, extremely rewarding for the families and individuals, knowing that these trees will be in Riverside for the next 100, 200, 300 years. If you walk from the swim club, along the Displanes River, past the scout cabin, past Indian Gardens, past where it used to be the Hoffman Dam, and go all the way through Swan Pond on the wooded hilly side, that's our primary location, but also this year, Mike Collins is going to have us extend. We're going to go east, past the Swin Bridge, almost all the way to Ogden Avenue, and we'll plant quite a few varieties in that area as well. One special note, I'll pass this little wafer around. Mike Collins actually cut that bur oak, let's see, about six years ago, and he gave it to my father, who was planting tree seeds at the age of 101 that particular year, because this bur oak is 101 years old. He counted the rings, and it's 101, and that, as you see, is not that large in diameter, which represents a bur oak in Riverside that was cut down due to tree damage. 101 years old. If you go to the Boy Scout Cabin, and if you're standing on the porch, looking away from the cabin, about 100 feet to the left is a ginormous, very old northern red oak. The diameter of that tree is pretty close to four feet, and I'm estimating that tree is at least 400 years old. So I'm starting to identify some of these ancient trees in Riverside. So if you have a chance to go to the Boy Scout Cabin, step on the porch there and look to the left about 100 feet, you'll see that beautiful northern red oak. Still produces thousands of acorns, so if you can subtract, that tree was a little seedling in the year 1614. So that's seen a lot of activity in Riverside. This year, we're also going to be expanding the educational aspect of the tree planting project. The Audubon Society will be present, Arbor Day Society, Midwest Soaring Native American Foundation. Also, you might have read in the landmark article that One Earth, Our Earth, is a new organization that's going to help instruct students, grade school, junior high school, high school, in the new art of filming environmental projects, issues, and they can submit their film, even if it's five or seven minutes, for a film festival at the University of Illinois-Chicago. And we will be giving some details about that during the morning teaching seminar. Also, the 1,000 Tree Planting Project has recently been nominated, along with the Village of Riverside, for two national awards. These awards actually will take two or three years to perhaps work their way up, but the Arbor Day Society out of Lincoln, Nebraska, has been following our project, as well as the Audubon Society. For those volunteers that would like to join us, make sure you dress warmly, hat, gloves, work boots. When you return from planting, we will have a hot chili dinner at the church with hot chocolate, hot coffee, hot tea. We'd like to invite as many people that are able to attend as possible. And with some of that information I just read, I'd like to also introduce one of our most faithful, diligent, hard-working planters, Jake Shevitz. Come on up. He's in fifth grade. All ears.
So what do you notice happens to be all around Riverside? Trees, just trees. And why are they there? Because we planted them. And when we plant these trees, we're not only creating life for those trees, we're creating life for the squirrels who need a home, we're creating life for the caterpillars that eat their leaves, and most of all, we are creating life for ourselves, the ones who need oxygen, so we can breathe from these trees. When we create the life of these trees, we create life for all these things. That's what I love about the 1,000 Trees Project. Every year, well, not every, but yeah, almost every year, I've been going with my father right there. And we have been planting 100 seeds, contributing to creating life for almost every animal in Riverside. And there are trees all around us, and someday, those trees will be gone. But don't worry, there will be plenty of new trees that we planted ourselves. And sometimes, you can invite anybody you want. You can invite a friend, you can invite a family. This is pretty much one of the biggest events in Riverside, one of them, when it comes to nature. Um, that's pretty much all I want to say.
Any questions? Stay up there, we might have a question.
Any questions you have for this hard-working young gentleman?
I think not.
See, they should all come and join us, right?
It's hard to rebut that plea, I tell you.
Become a volunteer, support Riverside.
Thank you, Coach Sissilak, and thank you, young Mr. Shevitz. And just to reiterate, it's this Saturday, 82 Woodside, the United Methodist Church, 10:00. So come out and plant some trees. Any further public comment? Mr. Gallus?
Hello, 3234 South Harlem. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you and the village board on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. It is my pleasure to inform the public of upcoming chamber events. Small Business Saturday will take place on Saturday, November 29. It will be on that day that you will be able to shop in your local businesses, just in time for Holiday Show. It's a place for shopping in Riverside, as opposed to the big box stores that people normally go to. And in the mail, you will be getting this flyer in the next couple of days or so, which will give you discounts, coupons at your favorite establishments here in town. Shortly after that will be the Holiday Show, which I'll be back in December to give you all the details about, but that will be on December 5, Friday. I know Sam will be here about 5:45, and like I said, I'll be back in December to let you know where he'll be thereafter, where Frost will be, who will have what, et cetera. And this will be our 40th Annual Holiday Show, and by this time next year, we should be seeing the completion of the Streets Cape-Ha and Burlington, if all things go well. So we're very excited about that. At every chamber meeting I've been to, we've heard nothing but positive things about that, so good things to come. And I have nothing further. Thank you so much, and happy Thanksgiving.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Further public comment? Mr. Buttermer?
My name is Jerry Buttermer. I live on Scottswood Road, and about a year ago, a dozen of us volunteered to open up access and views along the riverfront. We did that to connect the bridge area with Swan Pond, and we differentiated from the other miles of Riverbank, because this is within the Central Business District. This land is described as the best land in the village because of its elevation, views, accessibility, and location. I have a short clip, and in it, you'll see Olmsted's general plan provided open views of the river. You'll hear points for the CBD and a riverfront walking path. You'll see volunteers working to make the connection. Finally, you'll see historic art, and you might have a new app for us. Multiple studies have advocated for views, access, and recreation to improve our quality of life and to help businesses. Our plan was to make a natural connection, not an official or a formal path, and you'll see the natural beauty with minimal use of man-made materials. Removing weed trees and poison ivy also showed that the backside of the library is as beautiful as the front. The Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, or CMAP, also recommends artistic use of the backs of the buildings along the railscape. You may envision even more creative and tasteful tactics to attract customers to our CBD. As you watch, please ask yourself, how many towns have such a natural beauty as part Now, what isn't real clear in the images, because the lighting's not that crisp, is that we put QR codes in the corner of each placard, and we didn't know whether people would be drawn to the yard or if they would ignore it, and I was pleasantly surprised to see pedestrian reaction. The further thought is that those are such classic pieces, they're out of a book from 1871 by the Riverside Improvement Company, and there's about 40 or so illustrations. So we took macro photography and blew them up. Those were just simple, simple mock-ups with no money spent, basically. But I was very intrigued by the reaction of pedestrians. We only had them up here, I think, for a day or a day and a half, but I stuck them up in my side yard, and that's where the big group was looking at them. People immediately knew to take out their smartphone and scan the QR code, and it takes them to a video, and I was amazed, because these are pretty amateurish videos, I was amazed at how attentive people were. And what it's telling me is, we cleared the land, so we have the visual connection or the walking connection from the bridge to Swan Pond, but we were still looking for that magical connection to get the people that get out of their kayak or get done with their run or get off their bike to walk over and find the Central Business District. So in addition to the video that they could watch to see how the flood caused the erosion or where the refectory once stood, we can also, in a professional way, tag on a 15-second floor, viewer, molly, choo-choo, you know, infomercial at the end of it, and I think people will watch it. So we all know where those things are, but as we begin to draw people from kayaking, from running, from cycling, off the train, this could be a pretty unique tool. So I thought I should share that with y'all.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Is there a link to the YouTube if people want to be able to see that at home? Do you have the link or?
If you just go into Google or on YouTube and search for Riverside Riverfront, two words, or Riverside Riverfront as one word, it should get you to the page, and you'll be able to find that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Campbell from Bear Bank Road. Couple of things I'm confused on. Mr. Buttermer just said that it wasn't going to be like a formal, official walking path, but I've repeatedly heard it presented as that to the board for runners. But I've repeatedly heard it presented as that to the board for runners and walkers. So, is it, or isn't it going to be a path for pedestrians? And if it is, well, if we could take a quick trip down memory lane. Some risk management considerations. Proposed footpath would be isolated, located between the back of village buildings and dense vegetation, which now is gone because it was cut down and thrown in a navigable waterway. Public safety is a concern, especially during non-daylight hours. Because of the isolated location of the path, significant lighting improvements would be necessary along the entire length. The proposed location of the path would place walkers, pedestrians, in close proximity to service drives currently used by police, fire, and parks and rec departments. Bringing foot traffic closer to these service areas would not be recommended. Served areas, there would be a significant slope between the path and the river. This would necessitate a guardrail system along the riverside of the path to protect the pedestrians. Now, I know that the village had to shoulder the expense of the fence that's out there. But I don't really see that as being an effective control of pedestrians. Would you put that fence around Public Works to keep people out? It just isn't that kind of a fence. It has little barriers and big holes. The path would likely require stairs, there are major elevation changes. Would make it inaccessible to people that it has to be accessible to under ADA. And I would question whether it's even wide enough, or it has the appropriate slope to be legal under ADA. And if we don't need to be, then I'd like to see the exemption. Again, just the rule of law that I'm looking at, because we've already seen that certain paths have not complied with ADA requirements. The terrain behind the building slopes down towards the river. Because it would cut across the slope, rain, snow, and ice would likely migrate across the path, potentially resulting in poor walking conditions on the path. And then it would bring walkers very near an existing fire escape structure, which could be viewed as an attractive place to mile away idle hours. I, I just don't see how these risk management concerns have been reasonably addressed. And, yeah, there was at the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Trustee.
What do you mean by widely in the way the hours? Explain that part of your comment to me.
The path would bring walkers very near an existing fire escape structure. The structure could potentially be viewed as an attractive nuisance for children.
Oh, okay, the stairs, right, okay.
So, and again, there's the ADA compliance issues.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, were you happy with the way that that looked back there? I mean, before all of it was all cleared out, and all the weed trees were cut down, did you like how that looked?
I think that the negatives of the weed trees being there clearly existed.
I mean, did you find it attractive? Did it look, I mean, did it look sharp to you? Could you see the river?
I think life safety trump's cute every day.
Okay.
And, again, I'm just addressing risk management concerns.
And the fence that's back there, let me speak to that. If you've ever walked or been in the Cook County Forest Preserve system, that, that split rail type fence is used widely through all the forest preserve systems throughout Illinois. You can go to Starve Rock, and there's a split rail fence within four feet of a hundred-foot cliff that overlooks the Illinois River. So, if the state of Illinois that manages the state parks, if the county which manages the forest preserves finds a split rail fence fine in that type of application, I can take you to forest preserves in Palos, where there are much larger precipices that are protected by a fence of that nature. If that is okay for them, and we have signs right now at both ends, which I find kind of disturbing to me that there is no trespassing. That's public land. That land is owned by the, every one of the people in this room. We can walk back there, you should be able to walk back there. You grew up, or you grow up, but you, you will.
You grew up, I was, I got here.
Mr. Foley, if I may, this, if I may. This, this, the, the purpose of this section of our meeting is to hear from, from the public. I just assume not get into a debate with those who have come to speak.
I, I, I just wanted to respond to some of his remarks.
Mr. Campbell, please, continue.
Additionally, at the August first meeting, there was a statement made that donations would be brought to cover the expense of the fence. And it wasn't covered. I, I'm unaware if any donations have been given to the village to cover the cost of the split rail fence that's there. I'm, these are just questions that I have. So, again, I'm not saying that it was pretty, but I don't think that it was done in a way that mitigates the life safety hazards. And there haven't really been any citations that would show that they are exempt. We are exempt as a village. And to cite the state of Illinois, I wouldn't quote that as necessarily the authority for rational and proper thought. Because they haven't done such a good job. And public, does public ownership equal public access?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Further comment? Mr. Butler?
My name is Rick Butler, I'm here with my wife Lucy. We're owner and operators of Pre-Hop Cleaners, corner of Longcoming and Burlington. And I'm here to discuss the proposed changes in parking with this redo of the downtown area. And we saw the, outside in the lobby here, the redo last week. I was quite concerned, they want to totally eliminate the parking on the Burlington side of our store there. They say it's three spots, actually five cars can fit in there comfortably. And my wife and I talked, and it's never a good business practice to eliminate any parking in the downtown area. Making it harder to access, they were talking about moving parking to the other side of the street, down the street. And we felt that actually by totally eliminating that parking, it was probably going to create a danger where people are still going to frequent our store, they're going to put on their blinkers, they're going to run in and out of the store. Anyway, we reached out to President Salz and Village Manager Francis, and they responded, showed their concern, we were quite happy about that. In fact, President Salz told me tonight, they're going to try to get a variance in the width of these lanes so we can recapture some of this parking. And we're just here tonight to say that it's imperative that we keep as much of this parking as we can. It, it just doesn't, making less parking or making it less available, you know, we're celebrating our fortieth year in Riverside doing business here. And we love the town, we love the people. You know, it's always been a challenge doing business in town, but we love it here, we do well, we've got a good customer base. But people coming from the north, or coming from the east, when you don't have any parking there, that was going to be a real challenge. So I'm here to thank President Salz for his, his understanding of this, and he's going to work on getting a variance, making the lanes a little narrower, and keeping much of that parking as we can, so. Thank you, sir, I just hope we can, as I said, every parking spot we lose there is, is important to us. So, as much as we can keep, we'd be happy, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Further comment?
Yeah, I'll make one. I have a little PowerPoint. I've become good at these lately. My name's Tom Lefrere, I'm from District Nine. I am a landscape contractor, been doing it for twenty years. And I am pretty close to an expert in this one specific area. If we're talking about pension funding, I'd be at home on the couch. But landscaping, design, installation, and maintenance is my area of expertise. So there they are, you can read them. This is a quick summation of the presentation I made the other night, I'm just going to go through it real quick. Historic downtown redevelopment, there are several ideas that you can follow. One is to keep it simple, there's an overriding principle, keep it simple. I'm not going to add the fourth word to that, we all know what it means. You need to use natural material choices, and also have a timeless look. If you have a design that you put in this week, and you don't have funds to finish the CBD for ten more years, that look has to still remain the same, it can't become dated. Olmsted has to weigh in, I'm sure we all know that, there's probably someone here that can address that better than I can. Material choice is everything. You do not use manufactured products, you use natural materials. Keep it simple. The, these are successful downtowns, it's pavers and a couple of planters. A successful historic downtown business district renovation is not about the jewelry, or the makeup, or the brooch, or the outfit. It's about the buildings. It's setting the stage for the buildings. Material choice is preeminent. The one on the left is my favorite, and it's as simple as you can make it. There is nothing cluttering up your eye. The one on the right, I think, is the modern interpretation of the left. Here's your alternative to permeable pavers. I have the, the grant right here, and it, it says you have to use green infrastructure, like A, B, or C. Permeable pavers is one of the choices. A stormwater treatment chain instead of planters is another choice. So when we're told that we have to have permeable pavers in this design, it's a false argument. Here's more planter choices. You can make them big and gaudy like Kinsdale on the right, or low and nice and simple like the one on the left. But good downtown design requires simple, simple design. But we don't know that, that, we don't know that, because we only have one design that we're looking at. There's nothing to compare this current design, so our information, our decision will be uninformed. So we need to follow President Salz's advice. He says it's very much a work in process, I don't feel any pressure to rush this. We should not rush this. If it takes another year to plan it, it takes another year to plan it. And according to the grant that we were awarded, we have another year to plan it. We don't want to make sure we get the design elements correct the first time. We don't want something that's a fad. This design is full of fads. The ribbon of concrete that runs through it is a perfect example. Mosaic planters that are three feet tall for annuals is unheard of. If you can point to me another example of that being installed in a downtown business district, I would appreciate it. Most importantly, the argument that we need to have this done by January twenty-fourth to submit the design and get the bids out is false. On page thirty of the grant, the sunset clause, says, "Projects selected under the 2013 application cycle must have all enhancement funds authorized obligated by September thirtieth, 2016." Not 2015, not January twenty-fourth, 2016. Additionally, it says, I just got this at five today, so you'll have to pardon me, I'm not very familiar with it. I'm familiar with reading grants, and submitting applications for grants, and completing grants, but I'm not that quick. Preliminary engineering phase one, which is the design phase, says, "As the project proceeds through PE1, which is design, the following areas must be evaluated. Six to eighteen months are typical time periods required to accomplish this." We were awarded this grant in August. It has not even been six months yet, and our design is completed, and we're told we have to approve it in a month. Additionally, engineering two, which is the construction documents, which means when you get it out for bid, and you receive your documents back. "As the project proceeds through PE2, the following areas must be evaluated. Four to twelve months are typical time periods required to accomplish this." We have thirty months to get this done. We don't have three weeks. We can go through this, I actually read the bill before it got passed. Construction could start as late as June 2016. It's projected to be a three to four-month construction project. This doesn't have to happen now, we don't need to rush it. So I urge the board to make a motion to discuss this in a public, open forum, and go on record on how you support or don't support this. But this design is getting rushed through, we don't know why, but it is. We have time to do this right. I urge us to follow Salz's advice and take the time. Choose among those plans. You, you can get five to ten to fifteen, I guarantee you, the landscape architects in the Midwest are chopping at the bit to put this on their resume. They might not make that much money on it, but if they get to redo Olmsted's downtown, that is the biggest chip on their, their shoulder ever. All the other LA's are going to be jealous. I know for a fact, we had the Conservation Design Forum come in here and pitch us on this project. Jim Patchett, who is the principal of that design architecture firm, is a PhD. He's a brilliant man, he's been doing this for thirty years. He did a downtown redevelopment in Iowa that is nationally recognized. They had all the bells and whistles, and it looks gorgeous. And they came in here to this building and said, "I want to do it." And we said, "No, we're going to use an engineering firm." Unacceptable, we need to do this right. We have the time, we have the labor, we have the skill, and we have the talent. I urge the board and the trustees to stop. Do this right, talk about it in public, at least make a motion and discuss it. Questions? Comments, concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Lefrere.
I revise the.
Mr. Jacobs?
Good evening, Tom Jacobs, 104 Scottswood Road. Mr. President, members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I haven't been in front of this body for a while, so it's good to be back. I'm here to offer perspective of the planned downtown improvement project also. My thoughts are threefold. To address a political reality associated with the project, to place the discussion into a little bit of historic perspective, and to offer three specific recommendations as to how to amend the proposed plan. First, I think it is important to recognize that this board, and everyone who has contributed to the grant's proposal's eventual approval, has already achieved a very significant victory on behalf of the village. To date, all the great intentions in recent history about improving the downtown business district have met their eventual demise due to lack of funding. This time is different, and you deserve full credit. With ninety-five percent of the heavy lifting thus achieved, why not really enjoy the remaining five percent of the design and construction, and demand design excellence fitting the Riverside legacy? The second point, and I'm going to start going off script, is that I think, you know, we all know that Riverside is special, there's something like, and, and when you think about the specialness, I think for me, it, it's like, what's the essence of it? And I happen to believe that, you know, we always talk about Olmsted, but I actually believe that when he came here and he realized the history of this place too, it, I think it had something to do with the Indians that were here before as well. And there is a thought of the Great Law of the Iroquois, some of whom were in this general area, that said that in all our deliberations, we should consider the seventh generation, the impact on the seventh generation. So it just so happens that when Olmsted's plan came out about a hundred and forty-five years ago, we are now approximately seven generations ahead. And I think the essence of Olmsted's vision was exactly the same spirit as, as this Great Law of the Iroquois, which was that whatever we do, let's try to make it in a way where it doesn't. whatever we do, let's try to make it in a way where it doesn't only, you know, it doesn't only last, it actually gets better. And I think all of us here who have chosen Riverside as a place to live are a testament to that because it's an incredibly special place, and we're the beneficiaries of that vision. So if we take, so just from a historical perspective, when the plan was written, that was like four years after the end of the Civil War. It's hard to imagine the timeframes we're talking about. So, but if you take that same amount of time and flip it forward, that puts you into about 2157 or something like that. And I claim that while the pavers, you know, this whole issue is not exactly about, the pavers aren't going to last that long, but in spirit, I believe it is important that we consider this. And that spirit, of course, is, are we also sure that, I mean, how's it going to look like 145 years from now? There's much bigger issues too, and we're not talking about those tonight, but I think the spirit has to be nurtured that this kind of awareness and discussion keeps happening. Thus, in my opinion, the most important aspect of this redesign and planning is the component of sustainability. So I've read about it in the newspaper, and I've, you know, now just seen some of the details. And I think the permeable paving is good practice. It's very good. And I applaud the village for even the things that were done with the new parking lot. I think this is really fabulous. In that sense, when the board takes action to fund and support projects like this, you exhibit true leadership because it has that component. However, looking at this plan and going a little bit to what I think Tom Lubfer was saying, so I have, I mean, he showed this, he had a slide, and it's the same image. I do think that what's shown out there is good practice, but it's not best practice. And good practice is different than trying to go above and beyond. And going back to this Olmstedian spirit, the Indian spirit, I think as our part of contributing to the discussion, that we should show leadership and take issues like this as far as we can. So when the designers, I watched that video when the landscape architect designed, you know, I think, I'm a designer myself, and I think what they tried to do is, to the best of their abilities, they tried to do their job. I have a feeling, seeing how far it went or how much further it could go, that if through your leadership, you challenged this group to go beyond, that they would. And I implore you to consider doing just so. So this is the first specific recommendation. The other two are, well, the second one is extremely simple. That is, I mean, it's really extremely simple. And this is an example of a planter that was explained as, you know, what drives the design of this is that it looks like the top of the Riverside Water Tower. There is a place in America for things like this. It's called Disneyland or Disney World, or I think, we all know that this is not the definition of authentic and forward-looking design. I think there's only one of these. It's pretty simple. Ask them to not do this. I mean, this would be a mistake. This is hokey, and we all know it. So that's a very simple one. And the third point that I had has to do with the, so I think most of the discussion I've heard is about the curvilinear concrete ribbon. And I second Tom's opinion about the prudence of timeless design. And again, I'm, really, I'm convinced of this, that this design was developed in the most positive possible way. However, I believe that's a misinterpretation of the Olmstedian aesthetic and the Olmstedian spirit. And just to, so, you know, the thing is, we're not going to agree on whether a straight line is better than a curve, and I don't think we ever will. However, I think that the argument about simplicity and timelessness has something to do with that timeframe that we talk, that we always have in Riverside, and this 140 years in the past and then going forward. And I'm afraid that, and let me just step back. It's just a pattern, okay? So it, you know, nobody's going to get hurt, and, but we all, I think we all deeply care about it. What I'm afraid is that we commit to a pattern like this, which will be out of style very soon. And just to illustrate that, I, you know, there has been so many plans before and so forth. So I just read through the Ed Straker Plan again, that was published in 1981. It's typewritten. You know, back then, there was only typewriters, and so it's just in 30 years. This is how much the world has changed. And so when we make decisions about something as innocuous as a pattern, but of course it does matter, I think it's sort of daunting. And one very quick paragraph out of his plan, it says, I quote, "The goal of the master plan is to develop in the central business district a naturally enriched streetscape, to provide a scheme in which the district will appear after its restoration as if it has unconsciously evolved, not forced, arbitrary, artificial, or pretentious." End quote. So I'm not saying this is a pretentious design, but I argue that this design has, there's elements of a fad in it. There's an element of an applied, you know, the curvilinear street. That's a different experience when you see it in the street and with tall trees. Olmstedian design is a sequence of space that people move through in color and light. Applying this pattern into a streetscape like this, in my opinion, is an applied thing that will go in and out of fashion. And as such, I would recommend you to reconsider a simplified and more timeless design. And in closing, again, thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate being able to address you tonight. But if anything, I think, I think we live in a world where we ought to push, and I wish, I hope, I implore you to push, especially the sustainability aspect, as hard as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Appreciate that. Further comment? Ozga?
Hello. I'm Aberdeen Marsh Ozga, and although I am a member of the Preservation Commission and the Olmsted Society Board, I'm here tonight in my individual capacity to discuss the proposed Burlington streetscape, because neither of these groups, of which I'm a member, have had an opportunity to really meet and review and discuss what was presented and unveiled Wednesday of last week. We definitely, there has been a discussion, at least among the Olmsted Society Board, that an ad hoc committee will be formed to address the concerns raised by the streetscape. You know, we're very excited that a proposal is afoot, but we think that this is a rare and unique opportunity, you know, to put in hardscape. And once that hardscape is in, you know, it won't be undone. And, you know, presumably the implication is, is that it will be used as a template for further areas. So, you know, I do echo the sentiments of Mr. Lubfer and Mr. Jacobs, that we should perhaps, you know, really slow down, take the time, get this right. One thing that I can say, when we're talking about the value of simplicity in design, that is especially true in an Olmsted landscape. And I think we should be guided by the principle that you don't want your hardscape to detract from your landscape. It's a very simple premise, but it's one that should guide this process. We should take, you know, for example, a design element like these curvilinear ribbons and say, "All right, this looks fine in front of the Village Center. It looks, you know, acceptable from point A to point B. But what happens when you take these contemporary materials, synthetic materials, and you juxtapose them with a more historic building, like the Arcade Building, like the Water Tower, like the Tower Building?" And you're taking those historic buildings, which are the crown jewels of Riverside, are real historic assets, and you're, you know, extrapolating that, you know, perhaps contrived, perhaps fatty, design and putting it right up next to it. How far do you go? And really, you know, start to look at those things. So that's what our, you know, the ad hoc committee for the Olmsted Society will be looking at. They will probably not have an opportunity to present that to the society until mid-December. But that is what the timetable is there, and I just thought that the board should be aware that that will be happening. So, thank you so much. Any questions?
Further comments?
Nick Fournier at 305 Maplewood. I wasn't even sure if I was going to speak tonight or not, but after speaking with some people throughout the week, I just felt that there's a lot of opinions that aren't actually being put out there about the streetscape. Not sure exactly why, but I feel like I represent a large number of people in town. You know, I'm not going to go into specific design critique or anything like that. I'm here to really kind of look at it more on a macro level. If you take a step back and look at a lot of the components of this, and even the firm itself that we're using, I feel like it feels more like a lifestyle center that they're trying to create. When you get into some of these, you know, wrought iron, modern pavers, concrete patterns, that kind of stuff, that reminds me of the Bowling Brook Promenade, or the Burr Ridge Center that they've built. And these places are nice. There's nothing wrong with them, but they were an existing downtown. We have a legacy. So when I think about a downtown, you know, arguably late 1800s, was it really downtown? I don't know. So call it early 1900s. Think about neighborhoods in Chicago that are actually burgeoning downtown districts, Wicker Park, Lincoln Park, Bucktown. They don't have any of these fancy components surrounding these areas. They have a lot of robust businesses that are in there, but at the end of the day, it's wide open thoroughfare that brings pedestrian traffic through there and attracts, you know, really attracts businesses to come there and, you know, operate. So, you know, when you try to put this kind of design around it, it's going to transform it into something that feels built rather than something that was natural. A couple of our local counterparts, the two that always come to mind would be La Grange and Glen Allen. Both of these places have phenomenal downtown districts, and neither of them have very complex components surrounding them at all. Like Glen Allen, the only plantings they really have, besides trees in the parkway, are business owners that actually put flowerpots in front of their own buildings. Those are the only protruding, you know, things that rise above the ground more than, more than six inches. So that would be kind of on the bigger picture, how I see things. Looking at the overall process, you know, I have a real estate development background. My wife is in marketing. You know, more often than not, when someone starts a project, these days, people refer to a mood board, right? And so before you do anything, you're going to go out to three or four different companies, or maybe 10. It doesn't even matter. And you say, "Look, give me your general ideas. Pick components that you feel are representative of what we want." They'll present those boards to you, and based on those, you're going to narrow it down and say, "Okay, two or three groups. Run with, go to the next level of design." And here, it was, you know, we've kind of gone way beyond that. I feel like there's, now we're taking someone that did a full design and trying to reverse engineer everyone's opinion into it and back them into something, where it just kind of seems like a backwards process to me. The final thing that I'll say is, this firm specifically, I know one of the projects that they hang their hat on is Downtown Rozelle. I grew up in Bloomingdale, and my high school was in Rozelle. I know the area very, very well. And Downtown Rozelle is not something that I would want to hang my hat on as a landscape design firm. It was essentially something that sat vacant for 10 to 15 years. They've struggled to get any real development down there. And I feel like a lot of the reason behind that is that it felt like something that was built. It felt, it just kind of felt cheesy. It wasn't a place where you're going to want to go and go to Molly's and go to the choo-choo. It's a place where you're going to want to go to Chipotle or something along those lines. And, you know, I definitely, as everyone knows, I am all for economic development in Riverside, but I think we have a certain niche that we're going after, and it should just have a natural, always been there feel. So I'll leave it at that, and I thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I'll make these quick. My name's Jack Bushio. I'm 269 Northwood. I'm also a member of the Economic Development Commission. I'd like to echo really everything that's been said up here so far tonight. A few things that I've noticed over the past couple of weeks. First thing is, you guys did an amazing job putting this together. And I think one of the things that led to very little comment against this up until now is the fact that people were just excited that something was happening. Something in downtown Riverside is finally happening. So I think that was really a big positive. And now that we're past that point, now it's like, okay, so let's do this right, because this is Riverside. It's not some other generic town that was created 30 years ago because it was, you know, farmer's land that he developed. I have a couple of friends that are around the country in various towns. One is an architect, and one is in building. And it's interesting, they both said the same thing to me when I posted this on the EDC page. They said, "Riverside needs to get this right." You know, that they know the town. They know the history of the town. They know that it's Olmsted designed. They both said the same thing. Riverside needs to get this right. So they both saw various things that were same word, faddish, you know, something that maybe isn't going to last 50 years, 100 years, 150 years. So that is something to consider. Another thing I'll say, the last thing, I used to run businesses in retail for 15 years, and I had 10 or 12 stores around the Chicago area. So I was going to various strip malls and interior malls all around the area. And what I always saw was the malls reacting to the latest fads, trying to redo their designs of their exterior and of their plantings and everything. And it's funny, I was driving past one of those today when I thought of this meeting, and it was built 12 years ago, and it looks so dated right now that it almost looks like it needs to be redeveloped. So whatever money they put into that, it's already kind of got no feel to it, no sense of what it is. And I think that there are a lot of elements of this that are great right now, and I think that it could be improved. And if that means that you get a couple more designers involved, if you get a couple more bids out there, I think you would benefit greatly from having that. And we, as Riverside residents, and I'm going to be here for the next 40, 50 years, so I don't want to be walking down, you know, a yellow brick road that I've heard it mentioned a few times. I would rather have something that we can all be proud of as we go on and as our kids go on living in this town. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Anyone else? Mr. Spatney?
Donald Spatney, 111 Woodside. I came really, I thought this was going to be a fait accompli. I got the impression, and I came to say, "Don't take those parking spaces out in front of Empanadas and the cleaners. Everybody coming from the north side of town turns left, wants to go to the cleaners. They use those spaces. Don't shorten spaces in front of the Riverside plumbing and hairdressers, because if you do, cars are going to have to stop and back in. And there are going to be people coming over the tracks that can't see them, that are then going to be trying to get around. It's going to create a big mess. Those spaces ought to stay the way they are because they're utilized very heavily." Those spaces ought to stay the way they are, because they're, they're utilized very heavily. And you've got to look at the whole traffic pattern of what comes, you know. Once, once a person turns left, if you're coming from the north, onto Burlington going east, if those spaces aren't there, and you want to take your shirts to the cleaners or stuff, you're at least down to the bank or further. And, you know, that's going to kill that guy. That's just going to kill him. People won't do it. They'll go to the other guy over there they can park in his driveway. And it, it, it just doesn't make any sense to eliminate him, you don't gain anything by it. And the other thing is, those artists misconceptions. I mean, you know, when I looked at them, I thought, "Well, God, there's the lake right behind." I mean, you know, they, they didn't finish them. They, you, you look at some of those perspectives, and, and it looks like there's this blue lake behind there, and actually it's the alley in the tracks. And, you know, it, they're so shoddy, they're so poor, the design is so awful. You know, get somebody in who knows something, not some archi, engineering firm, right? Get, you know, there, there's all kinds of great designers. What Mr. Luford said was exactly right, that we need to take more time, because, you know, this stuff is going to be there for a long, long time. And I give you guys a lot of credit for getting the dough, but now back off of it and get some good designers, like, like we should have done on some other projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spatney. Mr. Randle?
My name is Greg Randall. I am an architect. I'm a member of the Institute of Classical Architecture. I'm also on the Board of the Olmsted Society. And I would like to just reiterate what Tom Luford said earlier, that I didn't know about, but I think he's very accurate in stating that we should take our time. If we have the time, which as he has mentioned in the grant, we have, we need to step back from the design and actually critique this intelligently, and take the steps necessary to make the revisions that are going to make everyone on this board proud to have been a member of the Board in twenty years. And I've been a lecturer at the University of Illinois in architecture, I've been on numerous juries, and what I've seen in the design feels like a student's efforts. And it just needs the additional critique, the editing, that is necessary to bring this up to the level of respect that Olmsted deserves, and we deserve, frankly. We all live here, we all want to be proud. And based on what I've seen, I'm really glad our offices are moving onto Quincy Street and not Burlington, because I would be embarrassed by what I've seen, to have my clients, who are coming to me for design expertise, to be resident on Burlington with that design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randle. Lamantia?
Good evening to the trustees, President Sells, Manager Francis, and the fellow Riverside residents. And I thank the many of you who showed up tonight to show your, both your support of the Board, and your constructive criticism of the current plan for the development of Burlington Street. I have to say that I can't argue with one thing that has been stated tonight from the residents. I cannot urge you enough to not feel the pressure of time constraint to get a very solid, thoroughly thought-out, designed, critiqued result from this phenomenal opportunity that you've gained through the grant, through the obtaining of the grant. I guess I didn't tell you who I am. I'm Diana Lamantia. I'm a resident. I am the Chairwoman of the Landscape Advisory Commission for the past three years. And I guess, separate from what has been addressed already tonight, I'd like to talk about the public unveiling last Wednesday, just so that the residents are aware. I think there was a slight and unintentional message sent that evening that I'd like to correct. I'd like to talk about the Board and what you've, what you've done great, and what I would ask that you consider. And also, talk a little bit about some positive steps forward we might have. So this is one week and a day after the proposed plans for the Burlington Streetscape improvements by Orion Gailey and Doug Gotham of Christopher Burke Engineering Limited. The information was presented to the public at an official joint special meeting of the Board of Trustees, and five commissions were listed on that notice and agenda for that meeting. It's my understanding that those commissions were listed truly to make sure that the Open Meetings Act was not offended in some way. I think the message that may have unintentionally gotten out to the public, that was that all of these commissions have in fact studied, critiqued, and vetted the plan. I would like to just make sure that everybody knows that, that in fact did not occur. I was very grateful that we were offered an opportunity to look at the plan. The Landscape Commission got to see it in October. President Sells came and presented it himself. I thought that was very courteous. But we did not talk to the engineers or the landscape architects. We did not have a packet where we could review it before the meeting and, and give our response. And so similar to what Ms. Marshka, Ozga mentioned, their committee isn't going to meet until the middle of December. Ours is not going to meet until the first week of December, at which point we were going to try and put together a memo, the best we could, to address what might be relative to our commission. So, we feel a time pressure and constraint to give information without having due time for us to consider it, honestly. Try and, try and make this as short as I can here. One, another concern I have is included in this paragraph. "Some informal commentary has been given by different commissions, as I understand it, and considered by this Board and staff. The responsibility to oversee hardscape was stripped of the Preservation Committee when the ordinance was revised by the Board earlier this year," if I understand correctly. "Therefore, no commission is solely responsible for advising on relevant hardscape choices in the village." This seems to me a great disservice to the citizens of the village to not have a solid committee of people who are design-focused, to advise you the best of their, to the best of their ability. It is also my understanding that no special committee of chairpersons or design-oriented citizens has been established to ensure that Riverside obtains a sensitive design. Another, one of the people who stood up here this evening suggested that. If you push, if you push the landscape designer, even the one that you have right now, to a higher level, they will rise to it. This, this, it would be easy to get them to at least up it up a little, and clearly there's, there's much further we could go. I believe that the Board has proven itself very responsible with our financial, finances, and I think they've been open and responsive to ideas submitted to them. The current design includes only one small portion of our business district, but I would argue that it will impact the entire CBD, as it is developed, because it will be used as a template, or it should be. It should not just be another piece of the, the patchwork quilt. It, it is a defining element that hopefully as we obtain money, will be pushed throughout the whole central business district. And so we do have to get that, something that will, that will go right to the river. And I'm not sure that the, the river in the, in the hardscape will equal the river in, in nature's beauty. I guess I'll, I'll jump ahead here. I'd just like to say that I've been on the LAC for four years. Three years I've been the Acting Chairwoman, and I thank this Board for your endorsement to continue on in that capacity. I'm a, I'm an experienced design professional. I'm schooled and experienced in architecture, and maybe less so in urban planning. And in the four years I've faithfully attended and led LAC meetings, I've worked with an all-star selection of citizens. They've just been amazing. Talented citizens, talented staff, focused Board leadership. It's been outstanding. But, given that, all that time that I've invested, there's a great deal more to learn and understand about the Village, her history and her future. So, I just, I, I have to echo that it's just not enough time has been spent to get this fabulous, and I know that we can do it in Riverside. So, a couple of things that I would suggest as a positive step forward. Such a major public project should have RFPs sent out, not just to the engineering firms, but to design firms, to get the best possible competition, the best possible minds who are interested, as it was already suggested. There are people who would do this, they would, they would just jump on it to have it in their dossier. That's, you know, that, it's just such, it would be such a, a trophy on your shelf, to be able to design something with such a legacy as Riverside's business district. The second thing is that redevelopment plan should encompass the entire central business district, even if we can only build a portion of it right now. You have to think of the entire design, and then build what you can now, knowing what will come in the future. And third, I recommend that a special commission be established to set and enforce design criteria. Another gentleman called it a mood board perhaps, or, but, but, design criteria that the design can't even be submitted unless it meets these fundamental things. In collabora, let's see, and they can work in collaboration with the Village Manager, the Village President, and the Village Community Development Manager. This may still be achievable by your January twenty-third deadline, but I honestly can't see how. I feel the pressure, and this is not on me, by any stretch. It should be addressed, even if you must move into the next funding cycle of the grant. I thank you for your consideration and all you, all the work you've done so far.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Brockway?
My name's Randy Brockway. I live at 154 North Gate Road. And I would like to echo so much of what was said tonight by the residents. I think the points are excellent, and I think they should be, you know, taken for consideration. I would like to say that I think the, the selection of the firm, Burke Engineering, was a mistake. I would, I know that's rather blunt to say, but their firm, their building is full of professional engineers. This is a project for landscape architecture, design, and planners, and their firm is frankly very short-staffed in that regard. And that can be seen by the list, the four handouts that they passed out at the meeting last week. Four examples of their projects. They had four project teams, fifteen team members, and all fifteen of those team members were professional engineers, and not one landscape architect, planner, or architect. The fact that we've got a landscape architect on this project is commendable, but it seems to be perhaps a little, too little, too late, and I see it as a bit of a token gesture. So with that said, I'd like to make one more point, in that I think what we need to do is to look from the building face on, on one side of the street, on Burlington, to the building face on the other. So we're talking about a streetscape that's going to include sidewalks, we're going to be talking about the street itself. And I think that's the big aspect of this design that's missing right now, is that the street itself is basically going to remain about the same. It's going to be asphalt, there's going to be a few bumpouts, but we have a big opportunity here to maybe move some of these materials into the street. Some of the, whether they be pavers, or cobblestone, or Chicago brick pavers, let's use some authentic materials, and think holistically, from building front to building front, and not just think about our, our sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brockway. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming tonight. We will now continue on with our agenda. Next up is a presentation by Police Chief Tom Weitzel concerning the traffic study that was conducted at Central and Howser Schools. Chief Weitzel?
President Sells, trustees, and Manager Francis. The, in your packet is a cover memo for myself, and then a traffic campus study that was done in conjunction with District Ninety-Six for the Howser Central Campus, and some street work by Riverside. It was done by a professional engineering company, and it was started under Manager Scolera. After having some talks with the Superintendent of District Ninety-Six and her staff, we originally received a draft copy many, many months ago. We submitted changes or our desires back to the company. That's when Manager Scolera was still here. District Ninety-Six did also, at least the Superintendent's office did. And they issued their final report. Most of what's contained in that document, I'm not going to go over, because almost ninety percent of the document in front of you, if you look through it, is their campus. What, what we did as a recommendation to the study was, the whole study got started because parents in District Ninety-Six were upset with handicap accessibility, both on the campus itself, and more importantly, in front of the building on Woodside Road. So, after many, many months, they decided to do this more wide-ranging study. From us, what they're looking for, this is tied into another ordinance that's going to be in front of you tonight. There's some photos that I left in front of your place. I wanted to show you that one of the recommendations for that handicap parking has already been completed by the Village. Director Bailey handled that part of it, along with Bill Dutchik. And it, it, it's already up and operating today, and the signage has been put in, and according to District Ninety-Six, they've received a great deal of positive feedback from the parents. In addition to that, they're asking us to, the Board, to approve an ordinance to change the parking on Aitkinside from the farthest south driveway to past St. Paul's Church there. Currently, that parking is for their staff. So if you remember, many years ago, we drafted an ordinance where their, their staff could get little, little hangers that go on their rearview mirrors, and they would not be ticketed during school hours, because District Ninety-Six did not have enough parking spaces under the current plan over there, which required you can only have a certain amount of parking spaces if you had outdoor playgrounds. So, they were not able to park those cars on their campus. In order to, to do that, to institute their plan, which is really best shown on the page eighteen, what, what they want to do is, they want to double-stack their, their vehicles coming in on Aitkinside, on the farthest north driveway. They will come in, it'll be completely staffed by District Ninety-Six staff and/or volunteer parents, or other, other District Ninety-Six, either volunteers or employees, that's my understanding. But what the, what District Ninety-Six will do is they'll have cones in there, they'll, they'll handle what's on their campus. What the Superintendent wants from us is that the parking to be, no parking, school days, seven AM to four, so that you can't, when you make the right-hand turn from their farthest south driveway, when you come up to the intersection of where Long Common comes in, and, and the Woodside cutoff will come in, the cars can proceed southbound. Actually, it's an excellent idea. If anybody's been over there, you, you see that when the staff parks their cars there now, when cars pull out, they really can't get around them. Everybody has to wait. And in the winter, when the streets are even narrower because of snowplowing, it's literally a one-way, one-car-at-a-time street. The district has already done some tree trimming and some bush trimming in the back. If you go along Aitkinside Road, you'll see that they've done, so they have another clearer view when they exit the parking lot. So there's an ordinance tied into this tonight, asking that it just be changed from the current, where the staff has the hangers, to just no parking, school days, seven AM to four PM. I'm in support of it, my staff is in support of it. And really, for the district to do their plan on their campus, they need this component from us. So, really, the only two parts that we had, at least the Village had, has been completed. The handicap spot in the front, and the, in the ordinance that is in front of you tonight, to change the parking on Aitkinside Road. um, to change the parking on Aitkinside Road. I did pay a personal visit to the minister at, um, the church, and he is one hundred percent for the change. So, um, we don't have any opposition to that, at least from those that are currently parking there, um, utilizing that space. Uh, so, I do believe that there's one more component that we'll probably handle next summer. And if you look in the, the, uh, report from, uh, the engineer, there is some signage that needs to be cleaned up in the area of District 96, uh, specific Howser Central Campus. Um, we're not gonna look at that now in the winter months, um, except for poles that have existing signs, then we will do that. But the, the consultant makes, says there is some confusing signage over there. I happen to agree with them. So I talked to Director Bailey, and we will be looking at that to clean up the signage to make it a little bit more, um, uniform. So, really, what's in front of you is, I just wanted to share the, um, study with you. I believe the superintendent shared it with District 96 Board. Um, I don't know for sure. But I did talk to the superintendent this week and let her know that I'd be sharing it with my board. And, um, if there's, uh, any questions, I'll, I'll answer them, at least from our aspect, from the villagers' aspect, and, um, either sometime later in this board meeting or now, we'll address the ordinance change.
Any questions for Chief Weitzel?
For using for the village, um, study?
Well, it was one that Manager Francis and I mentioned because we had dealt with them before, but I think now that the board will be doing a request for, uh, qualifications. It'll open it up to more firms, but I would imagine that this firm would probably, you know.
I liked some of the suggestions that they had. I thought they had some really good ideas, so that's why I was wondering. Okay.
Any other questions? Um, Chief Weitzel, on a separate topic, could you just brief the board on the enhanced traffic enforcement that you threw out?
Yes, we, we did the intensified traffic enforcement last week again, um, and was roving. It means it moved around from village to vil-, uh, I mean, not from village, from location in the village. There were six locations. Uh, during the eight hours they worked, which was from seven AM to three PM, the officers, they had five officers, um, utilizing five of our squad cars, issued twenty-five citations and made two arrests. And we moved those locations to where that we were receiving emails, uh, recently, such as, they were on Fair Bay, they were on Berry Point, they were on Kimbark, they were on Woodside, they were on Selborne and Long Common, and I believe they were on, up, up on Northgate somewhere. They only took off, they, they had, we had a sergeant run the detail, as we usually do. They only broke for thirty minutes for lunch. And, um, we also had the traffic, uh, trailer up that same day in another location. So, I, um, I think it was well-received. The officers told me that the school that's located in the church across from District 96 at Howser Central, they have a, a school, they came out and stopped the officers and were applauding them for issuing citations. Because that's one of the areas that wants, um, that approached, when we had this talk earlier on these speed bumps and humps, um, that, that organization wrote me an email, and they wanted to be considered in that discussion, if this board has that discussion in the future. So they were very happy that we were over there. So, um, I will be doing, um, a final report on all the intensified enforcement programs that we ran in 2014 at the end of, uh, December, and I'll share that with the board, and it'll be posted on our website for our residents.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Chief Weitzel. Appreciate it. Next up are the reports of village officers. First is the village president's report. We have a motion to reappoint, uh, Catherine Leander, Katie Leander, to the Parks and Recreation Board for a term to expire 2019 and also to serve as chairperson with a term to expire 2015. That's for a motion in a second. Motion by Mr. Ballerin, second by Ms. Collins. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerin.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Motion carries. Next up, we'd just like to report on a meeting, uh, that, uh, Ms. Francis and I had this morning. This meeting was actually instigated by, uh, District 96 and, um, Manager Francis to discuss the possibility of shared services among some of the various taxing bodies in the area, including the school districts in some of our neighboring communities. Uh, at attendance today, we had North Riverside Library, our library, and also representatives from Districts 208 and 96, and, uh, as well as, uh, Mayor Ketchmark from Brookfield. And basically, the, the concept of the meeting today was, are there ways that as a community of neighbors, that we can find ways to maximize cost efficiencies, both in services and in purchasing? And I would say it was, uh, for a first meeting, it was a very beneficial meeting. We identified several specific areas that we're going to move forward on and have our, our relevant staff take a look at to see if we can't find some good cost savings moving forward. So I applaud the initiative of Manager Francis and also, uh, Bob Novak at District 96 for bringing this together. And lastly, just a, an update on the town hall that you heard mentioned tonight. For those of you who were not able to attend, there is a link on the village website for the, the town hall that was held on November twelfth. Doug Gotham and Orion Galey, the landscape architect in charge of the design, and also our village and engineer, presented the, the, um, the plan to about fifty people, I would say, that we had there that evening. We had a lot of good comments, a lot of good feedback, and, uh, we've been moving forward since that time to refine the plan. So I urge you to go take a look at the plan, and if you have any comments or suggestions that you would like us to consider, please let us know. The, the real challenge that I'll say for this board is, how do you balance the garnering of, of input while also not letting the plan devolve into something that, that has been designed by committee? Uh, we all know the old joke about a camel is a horse designed by committee. It is not a surprise, certainly to me, um, that some folks object to certain aspects of certain design elements of the plan. However, I can just say anecdotally that in the time since the, the meeting, the response that I personally have received from, um, a great number of people has been largely positive and very supportive of the plan. So I look forward to hearing more from the residents, and, uh, we are forwarding these comments and suggestions to the design team. And that is all I have. Ms. Francis?
I will be very brief. Um, I just wanted to provide a quick update with regard to Forest and Forest. Um, as anticipated, IDA is somewhat pushing back the timeline, and they're anticipating having matters wrapped up at approximately mid-December. Um, that, they're supposed to be paving the bike path next week, hopefully weather will allow, but obviously, certain items with regard to this project are weather-related. So, that's all I have.
Um, just one question. There is another layer of asphalt going down, correct, on the roads?
With regard to the resurfacing?
On Forest, yeah.
Yeah, that's just the binder coat.
Okay, so there is another coat that goes over it? Okay.
Once again, the weather comes into play.
Yeah, no, I was just, I didn't know if that part was done or if there was still another layer to go. Okay.
Can next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that any trustee needs to have removed for consideration? Hearing that, I'd ask for a motion in a second to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerin.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no reports of departments, commissions. Are there any liaison reports?
I have just one. Um, the Cable Commission finished filming, uh, Day in the Life of the Riverside Police Officers. Um, we have almost forty or fifty hours of, um...
It's a long day.
It's a long day. Um, so...
They're getting paid overtime?
Uh, we have forty or fifty hours of footage, um, several different, um, interviews with, with different, uh, different, uh, policemen, the sergeants, the chief, the dispatchers, uh, a ride-along, two ride-alongs. So they're in the, in the process now of condensing this down to not a mini-series. Um, so, uh, keep an eye out, uh, on Channel Six, it should be coming out pretty, pretty soon. So it'll be, be very exciting to see when, when it comes, when it gets done.
Excellent. Great. Thank you very much. Next up are ordinances and resolutions. And first up is an ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to prohibited parking in certain places and school zone parking, permit parking areas. Chief, did you want to present this?
This is the ordinance, uh, change that I discussed with the manager, and, um, I spoke to the board about just a few minutes ago. It is the change for Aitkinside Road. Um, in, in summary, what the change is, is just making it no parking, seven AM to four PM on school days, uh, converting it from its current staff parking, uh, permit parking.
Put it like four or five spaces, huh?
There is, actually, you can get, probably get eight cars in there, um, um, pretty good. And when we, and when, with the signage is changed there, we won't be putting any new signage. We'll use the existing poles that are there, and just, if the board adopts the ordinance, we'll switch out the signs.
Make the motion to accept the ordinance.
Uh, second.
Much, Mr. Foley, second. By Ms. Hamilton. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerin.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Motion carries. Next up is a resolution approving a coyote management plan. Chief Weitzel.
The, there's a resolution in front of you to approve the, uh, coyote management plan. Um, you probably think we already had one, and we did. That one was developed when Manager Scolera was here also. And, but what happened is, about five months ago, the individual that came out here to not only train the police officers, but had held a public meeting that night, um, contacted me, um, her name was Lindsay White-Dasher, and asked if we would partner with the National Humane Society to, to make a few modifications to our plan, which was them adopting our plan into their national template, and then allow that national template to be put on the National Humane Society's website as a Word document, and that other communities then could adopt and be more easily, uh, use that plan than now, because many communities didn't want to do all the work that was done in our plan. They just wanted to use a template and then change it for their own communities. But what she wanted to do is to, um, display it for law enforcement, because, quite frankly, the Humane Society has a difficult time penetrating the law enforcement field, um, beyond just shooting coyotes. That's about as blunt as I could be. But most of the agencies that are deal, they're dealing with, especially in the West Coast, uh, have, are, are reluctant to, to partner with the National Humane Society. So she asked if we could tweak our plan, allow them to put it on their website under, um, either our name or their name. And then, um, just basically, um, if other, uh, law enforcement agencies called me, for example, because what the National Humane Society would do is, they'll say, Riverside has adopted this ordinance, Riverside has this plan, call this police chief and see how it's working, because a lot of the police chiefs can be, you know, very, very set in their ways and negative, and they don't want to change. So, so she wanted, uh, she was, she wanted to partner. And I'm, and I'm glad to say we're the first law enforcement agency in the nation to partner with them. And since it's, since they have publicized it, they have had two inquiries, and I have had two phone calls, one from a West Coast community and one from a community here in Southern Illinois. They're waiting to really publicize it, um, if this board adopts the resolution. If this board adopts the resolution, then the Humane Society is going to go full ball, uh, full-bolton ahead and really push this for communities and law enforcement agencies. So I think it's a unique opportunity. And if any of you heard her speak while she was out here, um, she even changed my mind and convinced me they're very, she's an excellent speaker, and she absolutely knew what she was talking about. So, um, I, I wholeheartedly, um, support what they're doing. And I should mention, it doesn't take away, if, if we had to dispatch a coyote because of a legitimate human attack or something, this policy still allows that. What it does is, we use every other method first. And then, we, I'll distribute this to my officers, and they will know what the village board's policy is on it in addition to mine.
So I'd always ask for a motion, a second, to approve a resolution establishing a coyote management plan in the Village of Riverside. Motion by Ms. Hamilton, second by Mr. Pollak. Um, I, before we vote, I would just like to say that I am extremely proud that Riverside has had this opportunity to partner with the Humane Society. And, um, I think it's typical of an innovative spirit and practice on behalf of your department that I think is largely instilled by you. So we greatly appreciate your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Any further conversation? Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerin.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Weitzel. We have no considerations. Does anyone have any new business? Mr. Pollak?
Hey, just, I, I meant to what the protocol is in terms of the public comments that we received tonight, but I just, I wanted to, I was wondering what or how we, we could respond to that. And I guess my question is to the board, um, is, I, I kind of feel like we owe it to respond to the question about, uh, getting, uh, doing an RFP. It may not be feasible, I, I understand that, it may be that, or desirable. But I would, if the rest of the board would agree, I would like to ask staff to provide us with a report on what the implications would be at this point in time to do an RFP or RFQ, whatever the, the required procedure would be. You know, does it threaten the, the project? Does it cost us a whole lot more money? Does it, is it worth doing? I don't know, but I, I feel like, you know, we owe a response.
And I think a related, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, 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 go ahead, Ellen.
I was gonna say, to me, a related question would be, if we were to do an RFP, could we simply do it on the design portion of the hardscape, leaving Christopher Burke with the, the portion that relates to the design, the actual engineering design?
And, and I wanted to talk to that, because if you look at the scope of the project in, in, in whole, the design element of it is, is so small. It, it literally is five percent of the project, um, though it, it garnishes so much of the attention of the village.
Well, that's what everybody sees.
Yeah, and it's what everyone sees. The bidding process, the construction management process can all still be handled by Burke. I, too, heard these people tonight, and we can take their input or a committee's input, and I agree with you, President Sells, about bogging it down with a committee. I think the thing that I'm the most concerned about, having lived here for so long, is that this village has talked five different times in my lifetime about doing the center of town. And now we're here, we have the money, and we can do it. And I, too, agree that we should do it right. I don't, I haven't read the grant, so I can't speak to what Mr. Luffler was speaking of, about deadlines and dates, but I, I do want to do it right. It is all of us sitting up here. It, it is our biggest legacy. If you think about it, there hasn't been a capital improvement project of this magnitude done in this town shy of building the public works building years back. So we haven't really undertaken a project of this size. It's not the dollar amount that, it, it concerns me, it's getting it right with the right materials and the right look.
And I think you hit the nail on the head, Mike, which is that, um, the five percent of the job that it, that represents a hundred percent of what people see. They don't see what the, whether there's six inches of asphalt or eight inches of asphalt, they don't see what the underlayment is. They don't see any of that. They see the design. And, um, Burke Engineering is an engineering firm. I'm, I'm just a little concerned about that.
The other thing, too, that we can look at, and, and I guess look at with excitement, is that if we do look at something that is as sustainable and even more sustainable than what we are currently planning, and we look at something that is timeless and simple, it will actually reduce the cost of the project in some elements of the hardscape, um, by simple material choices. Now, we can choose to take that savings and do something else with it, or we could take that savings and actually use some better material, i.e. if that ribbon, this yellow brick road that people have so-called named it, I, I would venture to say that that could be made out of bluestone, um, something pretty, something natural to the area, um, and could be done in a more straight pattern or whatever. But, um, yeah, I think we, we either push Burke harder to accept all these changes that are gonna be coming across our bow to us, or i- if they don't feel up to the challenge, I think that we've, we look at, at a firm that is and would want to have the moniker of redesigning Olmsted's Riverside. You know, um, you know, I, I understand that Burke, uh... You know, I understand that Burke handling the street part of the plan is great, because it keeps the project simple and it ties it all together with one general contractor in a turnkey fashion that we're getting our street and our streetscape done by one guy. But it is okay in a project like this to break it up.
I don't disagree with what any of you said, but I, you know, what I hate to do is get to the precipice once again and then lose everything. So I think what Doug said makes sense, that we really need to know the ramifications.
I agree.
Exactly. You guys are getting a little bit ahead of me. I appreciate that, but really, that's all I'm asking, yes.
Well, I can report, and we, because we anticipated that this question might come up tonight. First, and we asked, we asked, to start with, I just want to just respond to one thing about Christopher Burke. You know, this notion that Christopher Burke is an engineering firm, full of engineers that have no landscape architecture experience, is simply not the case.
I have experience with Christopher Burke, so you don't have to explain.
And if you look at, if you look at the materials that were provided to you, I think you'll see that they've done upwards of 70 of these streetscapes. And Doug Gotham is a very highly respected landscape architect. That'd be the first thing I'd say. The second thing is, we have been working on this design now since April, for nine months, and never once in the early stages of this design process has anyone ever brought up the need for doing what we're now discussing doing. Here is a, this is Riverside's legacy.
You mean Olmsted's legacy?
No, this is the legacy of plans.
Oh, okay.
That we, that we talk about, pick apart, and put on a shelf. This is our legacy. We have an opportunity to actually get something done.
I agree.
At this point. And we did ask the question today about, in terms of the grant application itself, it does say that the date is September 2016. However, the planning liaison for IDOT today told us, given the political realities that, in which we live today, that the federal government can withdraw funding for either the STP, the street portion of the grant, or the transportation enhancement portion of the grant. If we do not have our project underway, and that happens, we lose all the funding.
So they're looking for shovel-ready stuff?
Yes.
And can I say that?
Underway by what date?
With all this discussion that we're having, that is my biggest concern with this whole thing, is that given the situation in the state of Illinois and the federal government, that I would like to start digging tomorrow. Because I am really afraid that if we push this off for two years and we continue to plan, that they're going to come back and say, this is no longer a viable project, and we have other things that are more important than redesigning Riverside's downtown area. So to me, we have the money available to us, and I think that we need to act. And if this was a bad plan, I would agree that we would say we need to start over again. I don't think this is a bad plan. I think this is a plan that's very good. Many of the elements are part of the grant program, so cannot be changed anyway. And people are going to not all agree on what looks good. Some people are going to like the curvilinear, some people are going to like straight. We are never going to have a plan that everyone is going to like.
Why don't we just simplify it a little bit, then?
I have no problem with that, and I have no problem going back to Burke and saying, can you look at this? But what I don't want to go back to Burke and say is, make that a straight line, do this, do that, because I think that's when you get a camel designed, is when everybody is giving their opinion, and then it turns out looking terrible. So when you have a firm that you trust, which I trust them, you go back to them and say, could you look at this and see if there's something that we can do to simplify it? You do not tell them, take out this plan or do this, do that. I think that's when you run into problems.
And I can give some examples of how the processes work. You know, it's, I found it curious that, you know, one, one kind of accusation that's been made is that there hasn't been insufficient input with regard to the plan. And yet, we're on the fourth draft of the plan. And the reason we're on the fourth draft of the plan is because we've been receiving input on the plan and passing it on to the design team at Burke, again, led by a landscape architect, not an engineer. And so, for example, trees going back in front of Riverside, too, that was a, that was a design element that the design team felt was a good idea. We're looking again at the ribbon, and, you know, I think one of the things that has caused problems with this is, is the actual computer-generated designs themselves. It's not a yellow brick road. We've talking, we have been talking about the possibility of using exposed aggregate. Today, we started talking about the possibility of actually using the same material, the same paver material, instead of a concrete, because of the ease of removal and replacement for, in case we have to dig up something to do, some kind of construction work. So, you know, this, the design team is hearing these concerns. I mean, with regard to Mr. Jacobs, there's nobody in this village that believes more strongly in sustainability than I do. But I think, you know, this notion of, at the 11th hour, to now say, we're going to start over, would be the death knell of this plan.
Can there be a fifth rendition of this plan?
Yes, they are doing that, they are accepting, they're accepting these comments. And we're, I made an extensive list. These will all be passed along to the design team. But I feel like it's very important. You know, if you commission a painting, I don't think you want to stand behind the painter and tell her which colors to use. I think at some point, you have to have respect for the artistic process, you have to have a respect for the, for the design process, so that we get a cohesive, unified plan. The other thing that I think that we need to be leery of, and I think this is another reason we have a book this thick up on the shelf, is the bantering about of Olmsted. If you look at the Olmsted general plan, the area that we now call the CBD is a row of homes backed up to the tracks. Olmsted had no downtown plan. So to attempt to bootstrap some kind of Olmstedian legacy with regard to the downtown plan is a red herring, to be gentle about it. I mean, we've talked to people on the historical museum who have just flat-out said, any conversation about Olmsted with regard to the downtown is just false. So, you know, I think what we want, and I don't need a charrette, and I don't need a poster to put dots on, to know what we want in a downtown, we want something that's welcoming, something that is both fresh and historical, something that will stand the test of time, something that will encourage retail business, something that we can all be proud of to bring our families and our friends and our neighbors to. I don't need a committee to tell me that. And I think if you go through these plans, even what we heard from Mr. Streifels' plan from the 80s said exactly the same thing. We have this opportunity. We heard from nine people tonight, nine people whom I respect, nine people whose views I appreciate. But for us to turn back now and lose this valuable opportunity, perhaps lose, I mean, again, we don't know, but I agree with you, given the volatility in the political process right now, it's not a chance, a three-quarter of a million-dollar chance. In fact, with the street, $1.2 million. Are we going to roll the dice because one person likes the planter and another person doesn't? Are we surprised that in matters of taste, there are disagreement? Of course not. Should we look to simplifying the plan? I say that we pass this on to a respected, award-winning design team that we are lucky to have, and have them come back to us and show us the fifth iteration. But I would not derail this at this point. If we do, this is our legacy, not a renovated downtown. So I say, let's continue with Mr. Burke and his company and give him a chance. Mr. Pollak?
I wanted to add, say three things, summarize with three comments. One is, I'm not suggesting that we redesigned it completely, I'm just asking that the board make an informed decision on whether or not we want to do an RFP. That's all. I wasn't criticizing the plan, I see a lot of good things in this plan as it exists. But the thing, I've worked on a lot of capital improvement projects in my career, a lot of streetscape projects, and there's always something, you look back and you think, I wonder if, you don't want to do that, you want to reduce that. Okay, so I've said that. The second thing, I just want to say for the record, this isn't the first time this has come up. I begged for an RFP when we first got the grant, so this isn't something new. You know, this is something that I thought we should have been doing from the beginning, but we didn't. And finally, hopefully, this is taken in the levity that it's intended for. I've always heard that phrase, a camel is a horse designed by a committee. I've always interpreted, I've always used the phrase in another way, I've always said that a camel is a horse designed by a poorly-led committee, because we are a committee. Village government, in its very essence, is group decision-making. And it requires leadership from the trustees, from the staff, village president, from everyone. Our job is to empower our village to make good decisions as a group, not as an individual. So, you know, I just, you know, that phrase has always been one that, I understand the humor in it, but I don't always find it applicable.
If I may, though, just to follow up on that.
It's a camel, it's true.
The committee is an insult to a camel. Yeah, but, you know, just so that we're clear on how this happened, though, Conservation Design Forum was part of the early work on this plan. We saw their work, we saw their proposals, we saw some of the designs they had to offer. The fact is, is that without Christopher Burke, we wouldn't have gotten this grant. And it is very, it's very clear to me that when you have an opportunity to have a design team with the skill that Christopher Burke brings to it, in conjunction with the engineering component and the interface with IDOT, when you can get all three of those things in one place, which is one of the reasons that we chose Christopher Burke to do our public works projects, that that's a great advantage. In response to your concern early on, Mr. Pollak, you also know that we also hired Gibbs Planning Group to do exactly the kind of review of this plan that's now being asked for. And they approved the plan. So I'm not quite sure how many times we have to go out and spend four, five, $6,000 to get somebody to tell us the same thing over and over. You know, I've heard about a blue-ribbon panel, a builder, finance, somebody who owns its own company, somebody with experience in real estate, a planner, a lawyer, our Ph.D. economist is not here. That's not so shabby. I think that we can make a decision and lead this village forward and let a small vocal group, who was incited to come here tonight, if you all, you all saw the emails, so that they could stick it to the man. If we're going to allow that kind of thing to derail this process, that's our legacy. And I think we can do better.
A couple of things. First of all, your reference to stick it to the man is not something that you are saying, that's something that was told to this group by someone else, so that is...
They were invited here for that purpose.
I just want to make sure that you're not saying sarcastically that these people tried to do that, that was a comment that was made to the people to get them to come here tonight. So I want to clear that up. The other thing is, I think that some of the issues are maybe that people aren't aware of what the process was, and maybe we need to educate as far as, you know, with the parking spaces. It's not our decision to take out the parking spaces, it's IDOT's requirement as to the width of the street. So maybe there, we need to look at some way to kind of come up with an education as to some of these issues. The pavers, why cannot they be man-made pavers? People keep saying that, but the truth of the matter is, they can't be, because it doesn't allow the permeability to take place with a flat surface that maintains its consistency. So I don't know how to do that.
You know, I really honestly don't know either. I mean, we had, we had a town hall meeting.
Right.
The folks who stood here...
But the same things keep coming up over and over.
But that's so frustrating. The folks that were here tonight talking about using clay pavers are the folks that were at the town hall meeting and heard the explanation of why they can't be used.
Right.
And they've been told repeatedly why they can't be used, because they break. In order to tamp the pavers down in such a way to get a level walking surface so that they won't buckle and that they will stand the test of time, you've got to use a synthetic material that is more durable, resists fading, resists UV coloring. All of this has been said repeatedly.
I know.
But when it comes down to, I don't want to do this plan because I don't like some particular detail, I'm not sure how many, how many times does it take to say that? I mean, we have the YouTube available for folks to watch, I've asked people, I've begged people to watch it. And I want to reiterate, though, that, you know, nine people, yes, but I have heard from far more than that, from the same kind of commissions that we heard people saying that they were members of tonight, who say that they're very much in favor of this plan. And like the exact design elements that some of the other folks here tonight said are so detracting. So I don't think we can design this by committee, and I don't think we can design it based on what one person likes as a design element. At some point, you have to have faith that the experts, the designers that we've chosen are doing the right thing. And I am very proud of this design, and I think, and it's a design that I would be happy, and God willing, if I'm here 25, 30 years from now, to still be enjoying. So let's let this process have its chance. Any further comment?
Well, can I ask, so does the board not, do you want that or not?
I do not support an RFP being put out.
I'm not asking for that. All I'm asking is, do you want a detailed report on what the implications of doing that would be?
Doug, I just gave it to you. What's more detailed than them telling us we risk losing the funding? What else, what else, what else do you need?
I'd like to know what the cost would be, what are the risks? I mean, I understand how those things go, and, you know, the I-TAP funding is good until through 2016, I'm told.
Unless they pull it.
Unless they pull it.
But why would they pull it?
What state do you live in, Doug?
I've done I-TAP.
I know, I'm just saying that...
I am implementing an I-TAP grant right now as we speak, I'm familiar with it.
I'm more, maybe I'm more skeptical than you are on this, but I do not, I do not trust that the funds will be there in 2016.
And to that point, you know, we were, you know, I was speaking with the village attorney earlier tonight, and that's what we're being told, that, you know, in terms of risk management, if that's the right phrase, when you get a grant, you, you know, you want to get it right and you want to spend the money. The question is, has we gotten it right? That's what we kept hearing tonight. And yet, people say we want to get it right, but I didn't hear anything telling us what would be better than what we have. I mean, I heard one person say, I think the planters are hokey. One of the leading historians in our town today called me and said, I love the planters, I think they're, they pick up on the iconography of the village. So let's say, let's say we get three, we get three proposals, how do we choose then? How are you going to make the determination? I like this one, I like that one, let's take part of this and part of that and part of this, and you know what you get? You get a camel. So let's have a unified vision, let's put this binder behind us and lead this village into the future. It's our chance to do it.
So long as I know that Christopher Burke and the landscape architect are looking at additional refinements to the plan...
Absolutely, without question.
Then I'm fine with going forward with the process as it is right now. As you know, Ben, I've had some misgivings about certain aspects of the plan, and as long as I know that those are being looked at, and we will have a chance to look at that again and incorporate, maybe, you know, and consider it, maybe not incorporate, but consider some of the ideas that may have been raised tonight, then I'm fine with going forward.
And I don't think that everything even has to be done by the time, things like a bike rack or whatever, does not need to be decided by December, whatever the date is. I mean, some of those things...
We can buy a bike rack.
Right, exactly. We can decide that later. So not everything has to be set in stone, but I think the main component...
Or pavers. Main design.
Right, exactly.
The other thing we don't talk about is the cost of construction. You know, construction costs go up every year on a million-dollar project, 10% increase in production costs, that's...
The bulk of this project is in the street. The bulk of the meat and potatoes of this project are stuff we won't even see, and it'll all be in the street.
One thing that could result from a report such as Trustee Pollak asked about would be that it could be, it could have the history of all the proposals, the process, as well as the risks when you get grant money, there are risks if you wait to spend it, and then that could be posted. And so, I mean, like, for instance, comments related to, whoa, well, we're, you know, there could be a lot more creativity in the street. It's like, uh-uh, IDOT doesn't allow creativity in the street without a lot of, I mean, you have to stake a lot of, you're going to need a lot of input in order to get anything approved. have to stake a lot of, you're going to need a lot of input in order to get anything approved. Stuff about, you know, what you have most control over, you have the most control over your sidewalks in any streetscape project because they're yours. Once you're in the street, you know, that's a whole different ballgame.
And I have to say, you know, that's some of the frustration, and I do, I do appreciate the difference in perspective. I mean, you know, Manager Francis and Director Apt, and I, you know, we interact daily with Mr. Gotham and Mr. Galey on this. I have seen, over hours and hours, the consideration, the dedication, the open-mindedness, the, you know, the integrity, the artistic integrity of these people, which is something that the average resident doesn't get to see. I mean, we're here tonight, we should put pavers in the street. That was in the first draft. And when we took that draft around to the various commissions, it was roundly rejected. You know, I do want to say that one of the things that Ms. Lamontilla said tonight that I really appreciated, because I don't want there to be any kind of misconstrual, you know, this, the plan has not been taken to any commission in terms of asking for any kind of approval or disapproval, because our village code does not permit that. The central business district is not part of the purview of the preservation or the landscape advisory commission, so there, but having said that, we've been taking these plans to them because we want their advice, we want their perspectives. So a lot of the things that people now, in November, are saying, well, why don't we talk about this? We're talked about in April and May and June as the plans, as the plan matured and came into the, to the plan that we have now. So, you know, it's, if people don't come to the meetings, if they're invited and then don't come to the meetings, I don't know what to do when they then complain about not having input. I just, I don't know what you do about a situation like that. But all I know is that we've spent a lot of time, staff and I, taking this plan around to the chamber, to the various commissions repeatedly, as we've gotten the different iterations, and the response has been very, very good. The organized, you know, comments we heard tonight notwithstanding, for everyone we heard tonight, I've heard from three, so.
Can I just summarize, hopefully, close it out? I asked a simple question, it's obvious, it's the board's consensus to keep moving forward. I mean, it's obvious from the discussion, at least, at least the majority, if not everyone, wants to move forward. I just thought we deserved, we have responsibility to respond to what was being suggested tonight. It's the only reason I brought it up, and we've responded. And so, you know, they, you know, when they ask me on the street, you know, why is President Sells doing this, I can say, no, the village board did talk about this, and it was our consensus. You know, whether I personally agree or not, doesn't matter, it's the consensus of the board to move forward as it is, right? That's where we're at. I appreciate the indulgence and allowing me to...
I want to think a lot of the information that you gave tonight is good information, and, you know, it will be up on YouTube probably within 48 hours, so I can make sure that the Cable Commission sends you the link, and you can send another e-flashout to the residents saying, this meeting's on, you know, on YouTube, please look at it, there's quite a bit of discussion at the end of it, and the beginning of it, end of it, I don't know. But, you know, they should, they should at least watch the whole meeting so they hear this part of the conversation.
I think all of us at this table all have our own individual concerns. Ellen, you don't want to lose the money, Doug, you want to...
That's a, that's a bad...
You don't want to lose the money either, right?
I don't want to lose the money either, yeah. None of us want to lose the money.
Pretty much say that for everyone.
I really don't want to lose the money.
But, but what I'm trying to get at is, is that, and I have my concerns that our voices from the design aspect will be heard until the first shovel is put in the ground.
Right, absolutely.
And, you know, I work in a world where I've built many, 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 many homes. If you were to pull the plans out and walk through any of those homes, there are changes that are made in construction, add-ons, deletions, walls moved. This, too, is a project that can have that same atmosphere.
I agree with that, Mike.
And I think if we go into a project, this is something that the village has to have an open mind to, and we have to look at it as progress moving forward. Again, big binder, it's been sitting on the shelf for a long time. I'm excited about this project. And we may not nail it, and that's okay, we may not nail it, but show me any public works project that has been nailed, I mean, just nailed. I don't think you can, I don't think you can find one.
And I just want to say that I do appreciate everyone who did come tonight and make comments, and I don't think that we're dismissing those comments, if that's how you're feeling, Doug?
No, not now.
Because I think that, I think that the major tone of everyone's was that they want the plan to be simplified, that they want it to be something that will stand the test of time. And I think that's something that we are very aware of and have a commitment to doing. And I think that almost every iteration of the plan has been simpler than the one before. And so, because there was a lot in it in the beginning that is no longer there. And so I think that we are aware of that. It may just be a difference in the method of getting there, we don't want to start over again because we are afraid of losing the money, but I think we still are looking for what they're looking for. So I don't want them to think that we're dismissing what their comments were.
One thing I could say is, just from perspective, is this isn't the first time someone, maybe President Sells raised that maybe there's a drawback to the simplicity of the computer-generated imagery. It wouldn't be the first time I've seen the public making fun of a plan because of the computer-generated. This is just not, it's not realistic, and so people think of that as, oh, this is so hokey or poor, if that's all they're relying on and they're not digging into the specs. It's really hard to make those...
And if we as a village...
And I say that not to enter your debate, but just to say from a perspective, I've seen that kind of criticism before.
I mean, if we as a village wanted to spend a few hundred dollars to clean up these images, those images from the engineering firm can be sent out and digitally enhanced to make them look nicer. I mean, more accurate, thank you, with accurate colors.
Well, it's interesting, because, you know, I've been talking to people about this ever since the town hall, and a number of folks would have concerns about the, about the brick, the pavers. And then we would go and actually show them the pavers in sunlight, not under yellow light, and they loved them. So a lot of it is just that difficulty of the materials themselves being shown. Well, I think we've, I think we've said what we have to say.
Flog the dead camel.
Flog the dead camel, beat that camel. So any further new business? We do not have any tonight for executive session, so all we have to now, now is say...
It was good in there just to make you all like...
All we have to say now is, thanksgiving to everyone who's still watching. Don't forget the holiday stroll at 5:30 on December 5th. And I would ask for a motion, a second motion. Motion by Mr. Pollak. The second one is Collins. Please follow the roll.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Balleray.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Meeting is adjourned.